Consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated November 17th, 2016. Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee of the Police Jury met 4:00 PM today, November 17th. The committee recommended approval for the following items from the Parish Gaming Fund. Ward 4, District 13, City of Sulphur, $2,500 for the annual Christmas celebration on December 2nd and 3rd. Ward 4, District 13, Brimstone Museum, $1,500 for the purchase and installation of a digital sign. Economic Development Parishwide Needs, USS Orlick Naval Museum, $25,000. And Niblets Bluff Park Commission, $200,000 for renovations and replacements of equipment from Sabine River Flooding, $100,000 from Ward 7 allocation, and $100,000 from parish-wide needs. The committee also received the presentation of the proposed 2017 Police Jury Budget from Parish Administrator Brian Bean. The proposed Police Jury Budget for 2017 is $223.4 million, which is a 13.2% increase from the 2016 budget of $197.4 million. Ninety-six percent of the increase is due to capital projects such as roads and bridge improvements, construction of new facilities, drainage, and other important investments. The operating portion of the budget is 2.9% increase over the current year, which is very reasonable, especially in the growth environment. Property tax revenues are expected to increase by 3% in 2017, and the staff is projecting the same level of sales tax revenues that we are experiencing 2016. The staff is also anticipating the gaming revenue levels will be similar next year to the 2016 total. That is my report, Mr. President. And I move to...
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. McMillan. We have some speakers. Mr. Gilry.
Yeah, maybe, I was just gonna ask on the US Orlick, is it giving money for it to stay in that area? Because I know I heard talk about moving it, or we, is it, may they help move?
I'll direct that to, uh...
I guess, Mr. Landry.
They're working on a new...
Yeah, yeah.
They have been.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully that will come together for them. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to, there's a group out there that one of these items pertains to, and it's a crew that's had a rough go of it since March, and, um, you know, they've literally spent every penny that they've had to get their park back going, waiting on FEMA funds for reimbursement, which may not even be 100%, uh, just keeping up the fight. And they came, and it was really a no-brainer, and I appreciate all of you for, uh, sticking with us on that. Um, you know, as always, we wish it could be more, but hey, we'll, uh, we'll get you going, and, um, thank y'all for everything that y'all do, and, uh, best of luck.
If the people from Niblets Bluff, if y'all want to stand so we can recognize you. As Mr. Barris said, thank you for your hard work. Uh, next we have Mr. Scott.
Yeah, uh, I was really under the impression that we were waiting on some more information on the Orlick before we committed this $25,000. Uh, I know I had several questions that I brought up. I really hate to see $25,000 go to waste if this doesn't come through. If the private sector and if the public do not stand up, I mean, they need $350,000. So, is this money gonna be contingent if they raise a certain amount, or is this just gonna be $25,000? Here it is, we hope you make it. That's, that's my only concern with this, and that's why I thought we were waiting on some more information on business plans, something to show where they were moving. It could be, that can be a statement, not so much a question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I certainly wish I would've known that you had a question before now, and I wish that the veterans would still be here, but they've, uh, they were here earlier, and evidently you weren't here to ask the question. They do have a plan that they're working on, and hopefully that's gonna work out for them. No, I do not think, uh, it's, it's $25,000 to throw at them and hope you make it. But I would be happy to set up a meeting with you and, and the people from the Orlick, if you would like.
Well, I support the effort, but if the public and the private sector does not want this, and this has been a challenge for them since they started, I wish I could give them all the money and it'd just keep going, but, you know, it's just $25,000, and I'm just, it's taxpayers' money that the taxpayers and the private sector are not standing up and saying, "We want this." And that's all I, I just, I don't mind giving it, and I'd like to be on the tail end of the giving, if, you know, that's my thought, but I'm okay with where we're at.
Sometime you gotta step up to the plate. Mr. Brain.
Uh, Mr. Scott, if I, if I may, I, I know that they raised some private funds also. I don't know the amount, it's 29, maybe $30,000. So, they are, they are, uh, you know, getting money elsewhere from the public, so I just wanted to let you know that if you didn't know it.
Well, I, I would love to see it succeed, I'm not, you know, that's just questioning the budget, that's all. Thank you.
All right, is there any further, uh, any other questions, comments? Mr. Forham.
I'd like to, uh, thank the staff for their hard work on the budget. Um, they did a really good job, in my mind, keeping the numbers at bay for, uh, kind of mirroring the inflation rate, and, uh, have a lot of capital projects on the horizon, and, uh, I really applaud the effort. Tammy, you and, you and your group always do a fine effort, and, uh, hats off to you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forham. Is there any further, uh, any other comments or questions? There, we had a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Brain, a second by Mr. McMillan. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 12, consideration of authorizing the publication of a notice in the Official Journal in accordance with LSA RS 4219 dot 1 to notify the public that the Police Jury as the Governor and Authority of Sewage District Number 11 of Wards 3 and 8 of Calqueshoe Parish, Louisiana, will consider official action at its regular meeting on January 5th, 2017, at 5:30 PM to call an election to be held on April 29th, 2017, for authority to renew levy and collect a special nine-mil tax for 10 years for the purpose of operating and maintaining the district's sewage facilities. I had a motion by Mr. Andrew Pott and a second by Mr. Forham. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 13, consideration of...
Move on 13.
...amending the Code of Ordinances of Calqueshoe Parish, Louisiana, relative to the Louisiana Smoke-Free Air Act. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Brain. Uh, Mr. Bowley.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Police Jury. I want to start off by saying, uh, when we started voting the time frame out, uh, we had no idea, and I think many of you know me well enough, and trust me when I say this, we had no idea it was gonna ball on National Great American Smokeout Day. To make it even better, when we saw the agenda, we had no idea that we were gonna have the young ladies speaking today. And you probably have your doubts out there, you know, on the TV land, I guess, uh, but it kinda fell together, and I think that is saying something for our community in having those young ladies come out here tonight and really kinda kick things off. A little history, uh, on this effort, um, if you can recall, on October 20th, we came to you with some revisions, and we'll go with those in a minute, but at that point, we asked for a lot of feedback, social, social media, emails, telephone calls. Got a lot of feedback, got a lot of for and a lot of against. I will tell you, there was a lot more for the adoption of the ordinances, all phases. More particularly, probably the parks, which is the biggest change, uh, that you will see in front of you tonight. Since that time, we've also contacted, uh, all the agencies in the downtown complex, the DA's office, um, Clark of Court, Register of Voters, District Court, Sheriff's Office, to discuss the ordinance with us, uh, with them, uh, and just to let you know they are 100% behind the ordinance, uh, and they support it also. So, that's kind of a history where we started and where we're going with it. So, again, going back to the proposed revisions, we're still gonna adopt the Tobacco, uh, Louisiana Smoke-Free Air Act by law, state law, that will still be in the ordinance. There's also no change, again, to private business, as you see on listed, private homes, bars, gaming establishments, there are no changes, and I think that the group that I worked with, uh, did a great job of making sure we really didn't impact the local community or economic activity that's going on, local businesses. I'm kinda proud of that. The other changes are that smoking and smokeless tobacco and vaping, uh, will be addressed the same in this ordinance. Two biggies, and we had to separate them, by parish parks and by other properties, and I, I have to be honest with you, I wasn't very clear, uh, in my first presentation, uh, and Mr. Andrew Pott, I hope I can, I can make that a little clearer now. The reason why we separated them, because I think if you go to parish parks, um, I think we are held to a little bit a higher level, and I think people are conditioned in our area with great park systems, uh, to expect a little bit more. And so, in our discussions with community folks and our committee, we said, "Let's separate those." And so, the biggest thing that we're going to ask tonight, uh, is that all of our parish parks be smoke-free, tobacco-free, except for our camper and tent camp sites. We understand that folks rent these sites, they call them homes, some folks stay there, I think they can stay there for 13 days. So, we think it's important that those areas also be designated smoking areas. The other item is all of our government buildings, and I think there's over 200 of our facilities. Uh, this is not a big change, you can still smoke, you've always been able to smoke outside of our, our complexes. This just kinda tells you where you can smoke, so we're not changing anything on that, other than designating areas for employees and citizens who come to do business with us.
So, are you saying the area won't be right outside the door?
That is correct, Mr. Landry.
That's correct.
The areas will not be outside of any of our, our parish building doors, and I have to be honest with you, and, and the last year, um, this kinda came to the, to this point because of complaints, and that was the number-one complaint, um, across all parish sites. So, how do we get there if you approve this implementation? It's not gonna be easy, but there's a process that I think that, uh, we need time to develop. Uh, we have to purchase, purchase a lot of signage, got a lot of properties, we've gotta talk to a lot of department heads and agencies and talk about the designated areas and where they will be. Uh, the most important thing, we have to have a big communication plan to our citizens and employees, and let them know what's gonna be occurring. Uh, and then, last but not least, when, when you talk about adopting an ordinance like this, you really hope that you can make an impact, a, a health impact to your employees. And so, we've gotta educate our folks to make sure we can do everything in our power to make sure they know about all the succession programs that we have, local and state. So, I think that the whole process is effective communication, I think it will go smooth, um, and the reason why I think it can go smooth is, on the last slide, when we came to you in October, we said, "We can all, we can have this ready to go in January." We met, and we think that we need a little bit more time to really do it correctly, notify the public, uh, and probably seek more input. So, two things, we think we should make this effective March 1st, 2017, if you approve. Uh, and I think after six months, we need to review the ordinance and come back to you with some possible suggestions and results of the ordinance, if you choose to pass that tonight. So, with that, I'll take questions, I know you may have some, uh, or comments.
Any questions from the jury? Mr. Gilry.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, Dan, of course, how, in the parks are we gonna monitor that?
Yeah, I think the biggest question that people ask, and, uh, Mr. Brain asked the same question, "How do you enforce a tobacco-free policy?" Well, I've actually contacted the Sheriff's Office, uh, and the city, uh, city police later on, and we discussed that, and we all know that you just can't go out there and write tickets. There's over 1,300 parks in the United States that are tobacco-free and smoke-free, and they all get asked the same question, "How do you enforce it?" It's never by citations, not once. It's about education, it's about looking at the data. For instance, 75% of the citizens in Calqueshoe Parish do not smoke. All you have to do is worry about the other 25%, I'm kind of an optimist, I think that those 25%, most of them, when they see the signs and we do enough education, which we have to do, I think that's how it's enforced. I think over time, when you get through the process, uh, I would hope, like in the other areas across the country and, and the state that have, um, put these things in place, it'll become the norm, and that's what we're hoping.
Okay, Mr. Forham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, thank you for the work on this, I, uh, fully support this effort. It's, uh, something that we've probably been overdue, and, uh, I do believe that the 25%, most of them will, will, will obey the signs, and, and the other 75% will probably be pretty vocal in helping encourage them that they don't need to smoke right there, and, uh, and that may be the only time that, that citations or law enforcement may possibly get, need to get involved, but, but I do think it'll work. I, I like the idea of six months later, come back and reviewing it, look at the, look at the good points, look at the bad points, and, uh, and fix the things that we, that we might not have got right the first time. So, again, thank you for all your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forham. Uh, Mr. Scott.
Do we know about how many employees actually smoke in the Police Jury? Did we take, do we know that? I mean, I'm just curious.
I don't think we have the numbers on that, Mr. Scott. It's, it's not as many as you think. Um, I will tell you, I'm kinda, kinda proud of even talking about the ordinance, since we, um, brought this ordinance to everyone's attention, we've had several employees, most who I know, have, uh, got the desire to quit and have tried, we've had a park keeper already quit smoking, so, are some good effects already.
And whenever we, right now, we don't have smoke breaks, we have breaks, and they can choose to go smoke, so it's not like people are just going to smoke when they want anyway, correct?
Right. Well, that's more of a HR policy, but...
Okay, and so, but I'm just asking, because if it takes somebody one minute to walk downstairs and sit outside the door, how far are these areas that they'll now have to go to unless it's a designated break time? Are they now, you know, going from place to place? It's just a general statement, not so much information, I just, productivity, you know, that's what I'm curious about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Landry, before we move on, I think Dr. Foltz is here, uh, he's very, very instrumental in, there he is, he's hiding out, he didn't want to answer any questions on the medical terms or anything, so, if they had any data or any medical questions, I was gonna ask Dr. Foltz, but I want to appreciate him being here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I move to accept, receive report.
We already, we had a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Brain.
Okay.
To, and we're voting to pass the changes to the ordinance, actually. Uh, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Put me on the road.
I'm gonna tell Mr. Scott, if he wants to know who smokes, he just, just come up here around the bend, I could, I could tell you which ones smoke, I won't say their names.
Needing?
Okay, let's see, where are we, Mr. McMillan? Item 14, take appropriate action on a request by Martin Ritchie to abandon and revoke the original dedication of drainage and maintenance easements through Lot 24 at 1911 Riesling Drive in Ward 1. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, November 15th, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Collins to uphold.
Uphold, yes.
Uphold. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, 15, we've already addressed. Item 16, take appropriate action on a request by Jeffrey Couvion to rezone from agriculture to recreational vehicle park to allow a RV park with four recreational vehicle spaces and one manufactured home at 5080 Highway 27 South in Ward 4. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, November 15th, 2016, and voted six for and two against to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations.
With additional stipulations?
With additional, than what's on here?
Yes, I need to.
Okay, we...
Motion to discuss, I'm sorry, sir.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to discuss by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Hunter. Mr. Barris, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Um, the only, the only thing I would like to see in this right here, I would like to see a wooden fence, um, on Wade Lane, a six-foot, or the, the customary privacy fence. Uh, I know that it has a four-foot hurricane fence, or five-foot hurricane fence, but...
Hang, hang on, hang on, hang, hang on. We haven't called him up. Okay, just speak to the jury right now. You can, you can stay up, sir, I'm sure we're gonna have questions for you, but...
Um, I don't, I don't have any problem with what he's wanting to do, I heard it, I heard it the other night at, uh, at the zoning meeting, and, um, if I could just get that, that one, uh, six-foot, you know, wooden fence, dog-eared.
Dog-eared, yeah, I was waiting on that.
On, on Wade Lane, on the Wade Lane side.
Okay, uh, Mr. Crane, you, I'm sure you're familiar with the project, you understand what he's requesting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm a, are you Mr. Couvion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you could, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Couvion, I live at 138 Wade Lane, Carlos, Louisiana.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barris, would you like to, to address Mr. Couvion? You may.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just trying to get some separation, it's, you know, it's right there, um, and, uh, and that's why I'm not asking to go all the way around. I mean, you got the other, uh, you got Dr. Ordwens Park, you know, to your south, I mean, that's gonna be what it's gonna be anyway, so, I'm not worried about that, and, uh, then you live all the way to the back of your property, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, if, if we can get that fenced off on that, on that north side...
How about the, the, it looks like, uh, Venetian blonde, the lubers, you can slide into that hurricane fence, it's, it petitions it off into a privacy, you get them at Hercules, a little slider to slide into it, otherwise you're talking about tearing down quite a bit of brand-new fence.
Uh, man, I, you know, I hate, I hate that, um...
I would, too. That's a lot of, that's a brand-new fence, but, uh, you can buy these petitions that slide into it, like blinders.
The main thing, I know, I know what you're, I know what you're speaking of, um, my main thing is, is usually the, the wooden fences are a little more, um...
They rot, and you gotta update them, they, they just blow away during a hurricane fence, they just, I find no, no good in, in a wooden fence.
I've seen, I've seen those slat fences get all buggered up from lawn mowers and kids messing with them, so, I mean, I, there's an argument for either one. Um, the, the, the wooden ones just kinda act, act more of as an, you know, it's a dual thing, it's, uh, visual and, uh, sound, and I don't know, Mr., it might be fifty, you know, one, six and one and a half dozen the other, but, uh...
Go ahead, Mr. Crane.
That's really my, that's really my only stipulation.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's different options, uh, for, you know, obviously screening, and, uh, one of those is, you know, either the hurricane fence with the slats or with, uh, a wooden fence, and so, those are options that are available to folks, or even landscape material are options, so, um, it's, it's really a preference. We have stipulated before that it has to be a wooden fence, you know, and I think most people, uh, find the wooden fence, uh, to be sort of a cleaner look, um, but that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crane. All right, are you done, Mr. Barris?
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I wasn't crazy about the project to begin with, but given your situation and, and the, the way the land is situated, um, you know, I just wanted that one concession, uh...
Mr. Barris, if that's what you wish to make as a stipulation, you do it, and we either vote on it, it passes, or it doesn't.
I would like the wooden fence, six-foot wooden fence.
So, he's, he's added...
Just on the Wade Lane side.
Added that stipulation, and I think Mr. Couvion, as we saw, he would rather not do that, we, we heard that, but you're, you're gonna make that, uh, as a stipulation, and do we have a motion to discuss? Is that where we are right now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, do you now wanna make a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry, we still had a speaker. Mr. Gilry.
Uh, Mr. Barris, uh, being that you know that this was going on in your district, you never had a chance to talk to that gentleman before tonight and talk about this?
Where did I say I've been doing, what did it say I've been doing for the last three months, Mr. Gilry?
I don't know what you've been doing, Mr. Chuck.
The applicant can call me anytime, my number's published on the, on the internet. I saw, I saw the fences go up a long time ago, I thought he was gonna put a dog there or something. Man, I ain't got time to stop at everybody's house and ask them what they're up to.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, that's enough of all, that's enough of all that. Uh, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Couvion, so this fence is already built that you have out there?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how much a wooden fence would cost you to build?
No.
Okay. Um, I guess for me, before I would vote on something like that, I'd like to know kinda what, what cost it would be to this gentleman on a, a project this size, you know, I mean, if we're talking about a 1% or 2% increase to get this thing done for you, I personally think that's reasonable. I don't know what a wooden fence, what that would add to this project, what percentage.
I, I'm not understanding what the purpose of blinding the Wade Lane office for, why you wanna blind that off?
Well, I mean, I think Mr. Barris is just saying that this is what he would like to see, and, and I'd like to support him, but I'd like to know what you think this would do for your overall project. I mean, is it gonna increase your cost by 25%? Is it gonna increase your cost by 1% or 2%?
That one said, that was a thousand-dollar gate, that was a twenty-foot gate, I had a thirty-foot driveway already installed, and 179 feet of fence that was already put up. So, now that I tear that back down...
You know what that, do you remember what that fence cost you to put up?
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand, and so...
That's, that's including Highway 27 and Wade Lane together, and that's gates included. It's already implemented, as you can see on the picture, it's already installed.
Well, if anyone else can, can be the way, I'd certainly open it up, but I'm just a little uncomfortable voting on it right now.
I've discussed it with the neighbors, next to me, Tommy Bro and everything, he, he said he has no issue with none of it, at all, he has no problem with it.
Thank you, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, we still...
Keep it orderly.
Okay, sir, hold, hold on. All right, I will make the, the statement, we do have some other speakers, but, you know, y'all have to keep in mind that this project is going through the process, and so, sometimes when you have a developer that kinda jumps the gun and start, we may have told him we wanted the access to be on a different road, or, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen until after this hearing's over tonight, so, I, I, you know, I feel for him, but if that's what ends up passing, then, you know, he put this fence up too soon, and which has happened before. Um, I, Mr. Scott.
So, we're only talking about 179 feet of hurricane fence at this point in time?
Much.
So, the percentage of that is not very high, when you're talking a privacy fence for 100? Now, you're not requiring that the, the entrance gate be changed, he can keep that the hurricane gate? So, we're talking 179 feet, which is not a very high cost, in, you know, against the whole project?
Well, Mr. Scott is in the construction industry, so that's probably your answer, I would think he would have an idea of what that would be. All right, next we, uh, Mr. Latour's good, I think, Mr. Forham.
I think one quick comment, that, that most of the posts can probably be utilized for the installation of the wooden fence as well, so, um, it isn't pure cost, there's a wash in there.
I do have a wooden fence with metal posts, actually.
We all do. There you go.
Well, we don't all have. Why don't you invite us over, I wanna look at yours. Mr. Barris.
For the record, I have received a call from Mr. Bro and a few other neighbors on that street, um, and, you know, I, I told them I would do what I could, uh, they weren't, again, like you said, they weren't totally against it, but just make sure it's, you know, uh, done, done right. And, in my mind, uh, that's, that's borne up.
Okay.
I'll second that motion, by the way.
I don't know if we had one yet. Mr. Crane, hang on one second.
Mr. Pr, I just wanted some clarification on, um, are we talking about the screening of just the RV spaces or that whole property line?
Just the RV, I mean...
Go ahead, Mr. Barris.
Just, just the RV spaces.
Okay. So, his property goes beyond that?
Yeah, 350 feet.
Right, yes, sir. So, just the RV space, I just wanted clarification.
Which is about 189 feet? Is that correct?
Rocks.
About 190, say 200 feet. Okay. Yeah, we need a motion, 'cause we only had one to discuss, so, you wanna make a motion with your stipulation?
I'd like to, uh, move to accept with the additional stipulation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Hunter, to uphold planning and zoning with the additional, do I have to do that separately, you want it separately?
Um, no, you can do it the same way, and maybe if I could just restate the motion...
Sure, go ahead.
I wrote down, moved uphold with stipulations, with additional stipulation of a six-foot wooden dog-eared fence on the RV spaces on the Wade Lane side.
There you go. That covered it all. Thank you, Sam, you earned your pay tonight. We'll make sure Tammy sends you the check. You agree with that? You agree with that?
Yes.
You're correct? Okay.
I do.
Now we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Any objections?
Me. I object.
Do we need to do a roll call? Is everybody else good? All right, we have one objection, Mr. Andrew Pont. Everybody else is good? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couvion. Okay, item 17, take appropriate action on a request by Calcasieu RR Enterprises LLC to rezone from agriculture to manufactured home park to allow, yeah, to manufactured home park, to allow expansion of an existing park of 48 spaces. And they're proposing an additional 17 spaces at 1887 Arsen Road in Ward 8. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 15, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Scott. You need a, do you need a fence there, Mr. Latour? Or is everything good?
I'll take the planning and zoning's word for it. We're good to go.
Okay, you're good. All right, is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 18, take appropriate action on a...
Move on 18 to uphold planning and zoning.
On a request by Oak Grove Development LLC to rezone from agriculture to single-family residential to allow residential development, which is the future phases of Oak Grove and Highland Hills at the north end of Kings Canyon Road and Highland Hills Boulevard in Ward 2. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 15, 2016, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. I had a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo to uphold, and we have a speaker. If he just wishes to speak, or the, I think the motion is in your favor, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 19, take appropriate action on a request by Donna Riggs Stutes to rezone from agriculture to single-family residential to allow a residential development of 15 lots at 1838 Odraski Road in Ward 1. Was that right, Mr. White? I got it pretty close. The planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, November 18, 2016, and voted six for and two against to recommend that the request be granted. I have a motion by Mr. Collins?
Second.
To uphold, Mr. Collins?
Moved to uphold.
Moved to uphold by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. White. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 20, take appropriate action on a request by Eddie Austin Senior to rezone from agriculture to heavy industrial. Uh, I'm sorry, that one has been deferred for 30 days. Got a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
No action, no action necessary, never mind. Let's see, 21, we already addressed. 22, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the Division of Planning and Development to study the feasibility of rezoning certain tracts of land in the 2700, 3100, and 3100 through 3600 blocks of Bayou Den Pass in Ward 4.
Move to adopt. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Foreman, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 23, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the South Gulf Intercoastal Waterway project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 24, consideration of authorizing the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on January 5, 2017, as to why the structures on the property as stipulated should not be condemned. A, 1646 West Burton Street in Sulphur. B, 345 Joyce Street in the Dequincy area. C, 712 South Grand Avenue in Dequincy. D, 7637 Selfish Drive in South Lake Charles. E, 3905 Carlos Drive in Carlos. F, 30, uh, 2880 Highway 3063 in the Venton area. G, 1235 Sis Trunk Road in Moss Bluff. H, 2223 Hickory Street in the Sulphur area. I, 706 Neil Road in the Westlake area. I had a motion by Ms. Mayo, a second by Mr. White, on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 25, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids for the following. A, one 1500-gallon double-wall fuel trailer for use by Mesquite Control. Had a motion by Mr. White and a second by Ms. Mayo. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 26, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for the following.
Move on 26, all bullets.
Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2016-07 for the construction of I-10 North Frontage Road, Phase 1, west of Sabine River diversion canal to Ruth Street. The project engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $10,463,953.32 from JB James Construction LLC be accepted. B, staff recommends that that item be deferred to the regular meeting on December 1. That was the Burton elevator upgrades. C, Sulphur Library Chiller and Boiler Replacement Project. The project architect recommends that the low bid in the amount of $345,600 from Bernhard Mechanical Contractors LLC be accepted. I had a motion by Mr. Foreman and a second by Mr. McMillan. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 27, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Willard D. Chief Tremmy. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Guidry. And which, everybody knows Chief is, that's Sandy's father-in-law. And I had the pleasure of, of knowing him for a long time. Actually, him and my father knew each other and probably back to, I guess, the 40s. And I know everybody in Dequincy knew Chief. Absolutely everybody. Great, great man. Had a business there for years. He started out in the service station business and I guess in the 1950s and ended up there in Dequincy. Then he moved to, let's see, he moved to the Redder. He opened a service station there for a few years, and then he ended up and he opened Tremmy Auto Supply. And of course, that's, that's where I first met him back in, I guess, 1990, I think was the first time I had met him. And of course, they owned the Napa store in Lake Charles, and, and me and my brother owned the one here in, or I said Lake Charles, in Dequincy. And me and my brother owned the one here in Lake Charles. And so that's where we first got to know Mr. Tremmy. I tell you, he's a fine man and well-respected in the community, a great businessman. He was on the Board of Cleco for years, and he's just really the upstanding member of the community. And, and Mr. Tremmy, I know you wanna say something about him.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. Of course, I knew Mr. Tremmy before Butch and I were like best friends in high school. Not boyfriend, girlfriend, best friends. I was there holding his hand when he had his appendix taken out. I mean, best friends. And Willard and Louise were just always there. It didn't matter how many kids came. She would feed them, take care of them. They always welcomed everybody. Then as the days went on, you know, I don't know, Butch and I have been married, we're going on over 51 years now, so... So I've been in the Tremmy family for a lot longer than I was at Jones. So they were like my parents, too. And just wonderful people. I appreciate Chris, honoring him. He worked hard all of his life. He was always, he wanted to join the service. And he had a hand that did this. And they wouldn't accept him when World War II came in. That was one of the things he talked about that, that he wished he could have done, but they would not let him in, in those days. Maybe today is another thing, but anyhow, he always supported the veterans. And I'm thankful for Willard and his mother. When we, just, just by accident, my son-in-law, where they put the casket at the cemetery, this is just like unbelievable. It was November the 11th, 2016, and my son-in-law, Guy Potan, looked down because Papa was gonna be right next to Mimi. And he looked at a plaque, I mean, a marble deal in the center. He didn't really know what it was. He said, "What is this? November the 11th, 1944." And we looked at the marble plaque, and it was the two wedding rings. He was buried 72 years to the day that they were married. So that really gave us, it gave us cold chills and, and it was, we were happy, you know, that they were united after 72 years. So thank y'all for, for honoring Willard, and I appreciate that, Chris. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 28, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Phil Z. Phil Menard. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a motion, a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, a second by Mr. McMillan. Go ahead, Mr. Andrew Pont.
Little did I know that the last time I played with him and his band in September would be the last time that that would ever happen. He was known as Phil Menard and the Louisiana Travelers. And he was known from San Antonio all the way to I don't know where, east. I went with him several, on several occasions to, on festivals and occasions and played with him. Phil Menard was a, you're not gonna find a nicer person in the world than what, than Phil was. Same temperament every day. Loved Cajun music, and I think that's what kept him alive for so many years, that he enjoyed playing music so much. The love of his life was his wife, Georgia, and she passed away a few years ago. And Phil was really never the same after she, she left. But he enjoyed playing Cajun music, and I mean, first and last, he would have played for free before he did not play. And you know him, you knew him too, Chris. So anyway, that being said, it was a pleasure to have known him all the years that I knew him. You know, for 20 years, I didn't play at all, and he was one of the first accordion players to call me and gave me a chance to get back into the, playing Cajun music again. Whether I like him for that or not, I don't know, but anyway. But anyway, it was a pleasure knowing the man, and, and the Cajun Association was deeply missing. That I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Yeah, I had, I grew up not far from where he lived, you know, within the same neighborhood, went to the same church. And he's really, got some good people. They, they really were. And I enjoyed listening to him play. I wish I could understand what they were saying. I didn't, but I still, I still like to listen anyway. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Before, before we adjourn, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personal point of privilege. Appreciate that. So for a few weeks now, my wife has been after me about a new puppy. And the pragmatic side of me and the fiscal side of me kept saying we didn't need that. But then I broke down the other night. I got on our parish website, and I found a puppy at our shelter. And I wanna tell you about our experience. We went this past Monday, and Mr. Reno was very gracious to not only introduce us to the new puppy. Of course, as soon as we saw it, there was no questions about it. It was a done deal. And, you know, walking down those rows and seeing all those adoptable dogs is a sobering experience. And so I just wanna publicly thank Mr. Reno and his whole staff for a great experience that we had over there. Brought a lot of, you know, we have a very happy life, but if you get a new puppy, you can't be, you can't be happier, you know? It was just, it's been a really fun few days. And Mr. Reno was able to give me a little tour of the facility, an update. And y'all are working under some tough conditions right now. And we have obviously some, some bright, some, some bright lights ahead for us, for y'all. But I just wanna say publicly and acknowledge what, what great work y'all do. And I wanna thank y'all, and thank you for bringing a little joy into our lives. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Is there any further discussion?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.